Good evening. We welcome you here to the West Valley City Regular Council Meeting. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have six members of the council president. Councilwoman Karen Lang is excused tonight, will not be with us. We'll begin with an opening ceremony, and I just need to confirm, we switched? Or are you ready for tonight?
If you'd like to do it, it was really, I think, Steve that did it for you, but you can certainly do it tonight if you like.
Well, I just had it pop up on my... We take turns doing an opening ceremony, and on here it says Councilman Steve Buehler. Were you prepared to do that?
Well, I am, but if you have something that's more special than what I have...
No, it's the same thing.
Then I'm just sitting here thinking that I haven't said the Pledge of Allegiance all year, and wouldn't like to tell you all to stand with me and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I hope we all have a good year. It'll be an interesting year, I believe.
That's correct. Thank you very much. Just checking, we a lot of times have scout troops come or something, but doesn't look like tonight. Although we have a few people here, this is a little bit unusual, other than Stan. So we'll go next to the approval of our minutes of December 20th, to the council for a motion.
May I move for approval of the minutes of December 20th?
Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? If not, then all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go to a special award that we will be presenting tonight, and we'll turn to Councilman Christiansen. Is that correct? And we'll turn the time to him.
This is a special award to Bonnie Harris, a local resident. And as I read this, you'll see that she is an essential piece of our community. In 1997, the West Valley City Arts Council invited local singer-songwriter Bonnie Harris to perform a Christmas concert at City Hall. The West Valley City resident agreed, and a new Christmas tradition was born. This year marks the 20th anniversary of Bonnie's annual Christmas concert in West Valley City, and for that, she deserves special recognition from the city. But first, some of her accolades. Bonnie has been performing for decades, and has sung in theatrical productions, city and county celebrations, concerts, state and national conventions, weddings, funerals, business parties, and other engagements. Bonnie has performed across the United States, and in the Caribbean and Mexico. Bonnie is also a motivational speaker at both church and civic functions. Bonnie served as a docent for the Utah Symphony for over a decade. She has released five albums in her career. Bonnie was a finalist for the 1998 Pearl Awards Female Vocalist of the Year. She was also a finalist for the 2000 Pearl Awards Album of the Year. Bonnie is well-versed in a variety of genres, and sings everything from Christian music, to holiday favorites, to Big Band Jazz classics. The Utah Cultural Celebration Center hosted Bonnie's first annual concert in the winter of 2004. It was so successful, Cultural Center staff decided to begin hosting an annual winter concert series, which it has every year since. Bonnie has been a part of the series since its inception, and we're proud to call her one of our greatest partners. Bonnie, you are truly an essential part of West Valley.
Come up, and we have a certificate for you.
Tradition though has that you shave your head once. Thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate the service you provide to our community. You're one of those who adds a very definite artistic flavor and brings more culture to all of our city. So thank you for your service over the years. Let's see. Next, we go to our comment period. And we have several people who have signed up to speak tonight. And just a reminder, you're allowed to take up to five minutes. And so with that, we'll begin with Donald Capps. And we'd invite you to come forward up to the microphone. Before you start, Bonnie, you're welcome to stay for the whole night, but the rest of it's, you know, other business. So if you need to, people come and go, so whatever's convenient for you, alright? Mr. Capps.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to come and speak. I'll try to be brief. What I'm asking is a variance of an ordinance that I wasn't aware of. But what I have done is that I have a neighbor next door that has a huge tree. I brought pictures of the tree. Here, a few years ago, when the limbs came off and damaged my trailer, I put in an eight-foot wide by 30-foot piece of concrete according to specific instructions that I had from the engineering department, and damaged my trailer, and neighbor said he'd help pay for it, and then he moved to Riverton. And so I lost out. Well, last June, I think if you can all remember, we had one rainstorm. And that was on a Friday. And I woke up Saturday morning and went out, and there was a limb from the neighbor's tree that was all over my truck. The total estimate was $3,000. They said that they would run it through their insurance company and pay for it. Well, I had a copy of the letter from the insurance company that said, "No. That's an act of God." And they're not responsible. And I said, "Okay." So it was suggested that I go to my car insurance. And they said, "Yes, we'll pay for it, but you have $500 deductible." And so I said, "Okay, we'll fix it." And the neighbor said, I gave them the estimate, and they says, "Well, we're not paying anything. In fact, we don't want you on our property ever again." So I said, "Okay." I wasn't going to argue. Then it was suggested that I went through the neighborhood and I saw carports. Well, it was suggested that I put up a carport. Well, I did. I contacted Carports Incorporated, and for $800, they came in and they constructed a carport that is very professional, which I have pictures of. They constructed a carport, and I asked them, I said, "Now, do I need permits or anything?" And they said, "No, it's freestanding. It's not attached to your house, and it's on a cement slab. My carport is 12 feet wide and 21 feet long." Well, two months ago, I got a letter from, I think it's Steve Golds, and said, "You have violated West Valley's ordinance. Remove your carport." And I said, "Well, can I appeal this?" And they said, "Well, you can, but you're going to lose." And I said, "Well, I'm going to appeal it anyway." And so what I have done is that I've put in an appeal, and on Christmas Eve, on a piece of paper, which I have a copy, that has no West Valley City logo, does not have a date, and it says, "Remove that carport within 30 days, or you will be fined." And then I checked to find out what my violation is. Well, my carport is not 21 feet from the sidewalk. It's five feet from the sidewalk, and four feet from the side of my house. And on the side of my house, only at seven feet to the fence. So I can't put it, they couldn't put it next to the side of my house. So anyway, I thought, "Well, I need to find out, come to the council and see if I can have a variance, because the carport looks nice, and nobody in my neighborhood objects to it. They like it. It's painted good. It's not fully enclosed." And I lucked out. Just four days ago, another limb came down, and it hit the carport. Had not had that carport, my truck would have got it again. So I'm asking the council, is there a possibility that I could leave my carport up? I looked all through the neighborhoods, and I see carports. So I just kind of figured, "Well, then, carports, if they're not trash or were professional, that I could have a carport." What I'm doing here today for is just to ask the council, "Could I please have a variance of leaving my carport up to protect my property?" Now, this neighbor just put up yesterday "Help Force Help" sign on their house. And so they're in the tree business, and I even hired them to trim some of my trees, but they refused to take care of their tree. And so now they're moving. I understand they have family problems. But anyway, that's, I have documentation. I'm sorry I don't have copies of the pictures, but I do have pictures of the carport showing that it is professional, looks nice, and is saving me some money. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from all the public, and then there'll be maybe comments afterwards.
And can you just leave that copy with us?
Well, it's on his phone, he said. I gave him my city email and asked him to send it to me. Then you were going to do that, and I'll distribute it to the council.
Is that the copy of the letter?
No, you want the copy of the letter or the picture of the carport? Both?
Both.
So if you could leave a copy, if you have that. If not, we'll get a copy right afterwards. And then if you'll email the photos in, we'll distribute those to council. And if you'll give that to our city recorder, Nicole, why?
I really didn't think that was a professional document.
Okay. And maybe we can have someone... Get a copy of that?
I have copies of it at home.
Oh, do you have a copy of it?
I have a copy of it.
Then we're fine. Thank you very much.
Listening to me, I appreciate the work you do keeping our city... I've only lived here for 23 years, but I love West Valley City.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have Bo Paget.
Yeah, my case is similar to what he just going through here also. A little different, years-wise. Anyway, my name's Brett Paget. I go by while we're at work, obviously the ones that do know me. I've been a resident here for probably 50-plus years. I also worked for West Valley City. I've been unemployed by West Valley for going on 27 years, so I've been here a day or two, been around the city. The reason I'm here for is similar to what Don was just up here. I don't live too far from him, but I've been sighted also for two outings. And we call them west ports, a professional term for them. The one outing that I do have up, it has been there for probably 20-some years. Approximately, give or take. Never had a problem with it. The folks there before me have never had a problem with it. I bought the home, let's see, when was it? April, April of 2011. I was told that there shouldn't be any problems with it. So in turn, last year in May, I went and bought another one. There was a great big locust tree that was in my yard, and it was a mess. And I was concerned about the limbs on it, you know, similar to Don's, falling and going through my neighbor's house, which a couple of them did, but just missed the home. So I thought, "Well, I'm going to get rid of that darned thing before it goes through either my house or my neighbor's." And that's the trick thing about my property. I'm on a corner lock. So I have a front side and a back side. And the problem I run into there is the variance I have for my side yard is too much front yard. And I was told as long as I was eight feet back off the sidewalk that I would be okay on my north side of my property. And apparently I'm not. And I was told it would be alright, but by all means, I wouldn't have put it up, you know, after checking with the city. Like I said, tore that tree down, I put a nice driveway in, fixed my yard. I got a beautiful yard. And there are nice metal outings that match the siding on my house. So my concern was the one being there for so many years, if there's a chance I could possibly grandfather that one in. And then let's look at the other one that I've put up. It's well under 200 square feet. It's inside the property, and it's on my north side yard. I feel like I should be okay with that one, but apparently that's up to you folks. Couple other questions I have as people. I actually found out, not only because of the church members, I went quite around my neighborhood to see, with the note that I received, that it was bothering one of my neighbors. So I went to find, you know, which one it was bothering. Which might not have been a good thing to do, but I know everybody around there. And not one of them complained about it, said it wasn't them. And I went quite a way around the 360, around the block there. If anything, they said they'd like one just like mine. And I says, "Well, we're going to see if we can get that changed." I don't know about that yet. But I find out that it's a gentleman that's about three or four streets down from me. He's been on Neighborhood Watch. I didn't realize that they're looking for things that are out of compliance and code with Neighborhood Watch, but apparently he's let the authority go to his head, and he can do anything he wants to. But I thought that was kind of odd. Like I said, I've had nothing but good with the neighbors on it. I have zero. The way my house sits and the way it was built before, I have zero covered parking. As you can well see, it's the climate, you know, and climate weather that we have around here, which I'm a snowplow driver. So response means a lot. And it's very nice about there and getting your vehicle, and you don't have to scrape nothing, or wipe nothing, or shovel, or do any of that kind of stuff before you can come into work. My response, I'm the first one here every time. That's been a very, very well-honored for me. Get here and warm stuff up, be ready to go. Worst-case scenario, if this doesn't work, you know, again, the same as Don there, I've been given 30 days. And I've probably got foot of snow out there. It's a little bit of rough weather, as everybody well knows, before I start receiving fines. So I was hoping I would get some kind of a leadway on that, where I could at least give me some time, if I can get some help. Like I said, worst-case scenario, if I had to tear them down, if I had to tear one of them down, it doesn't say if I have to tear them both, one or the other, they're, I don't know. Other than I need, you know, 30 days, they need to be in compliance. So I'm hoping that I can be given a little bit more time, get some help, and a little bit warmer weather, where I'm not up there on the water. I just also had a knee replacement. So I was hoping I could get a little time if I have to. They're there now, that's about all I've got for this. I appreciate your time.
Right with your address?
It's 3733 Banok Street. That's, like I say, in West Valley City. The west is 4980 West, right on the corner.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we have one more. Mr. Markham?
First of all, Mike Markham. I want to thank Russ and Bo. I think they've done a great job getting out and moving the snow around for us this year. I live in a cul-de-sac. I don't expect it to be plowed all the time, especially because I have new neighbors that like to load that cul-de-sac with cars. Now, my next question. We send out a letter, I got a letter, talking about parking on the roads when it snows. Makes it difficult for the snowplows to get around. Right on the corner of King Arthur and Alice Way, we've got two cars sitting that have been plowed around for the last two storms. They're like, both their license plates are expired back last October. Why do we waste the money and print these things up and send them out, give them to the neighbors if nothing is done? I don't know who's responsible for siding, and I'd like to see some towing, because one of the problems is this house is a storage lot for a guy that owns a used car lot. And I'll just about bet one car's sitting there with the expired plates. I know one of them is registered to that house. But I'll bet the other one isn't registered to that house. This guy was just lucky enough to keep the plates on it when he brought the car in on trade. So, you know, let's quit wasting city money, sending out these letters, taking the time to tell people what we're going to do, and then not do it. But I want to know who's going to be liable when they park on both sides of Alice Way and the fire truck can't get through, or the ambulance can't get through to somebody's house? Is it going to be the city's liable because they're not following their own rules and regulations? Or is it going to be the homeowner that we continue to let do that? You know, one solid side of this whole thing, though, is I noticed last summer the guy had a Lincoln Continental parked out on the street, and somebody managed to take the side out of the Lincoln Continental when they went around the corner. But it continued to sit there with all the plastic and stuff on the roadway. Then the car was left, but the plastic stayed. This is a house that is a multiple family dwell. The owner lives there. His last name is Faldo. But what does it do to get the city to do the things they say they're going to do in this manner? You back up to it with the tow truck, and you drag it out. There's recovery trucks all over this city, tow trucks all over this city. I've had them come to my house and take a couple of cars in. But we just need to step up. I think you only need to tow it a couple of times, and these people are going to catch on. You know, by the time they pay the towing fee and the fines for doing what they're doing. Does anybody have, I mean, I know, one of these days I'm going to step up here and do like I joked about a lot of times, wearing a monkey suit. Because that's, you know, kind of gets stared at. But I support this city. I like this city. I've lived in this city for 40-plus years in the same house. I do a home improvement every year to the outside of the house. So I try to support the city in taking care of things. But if we're not going to get the support from the city when some of this stuff comes along, there's no reason for me. Maybe I'll make my backyard nice and let the front yard turn to crap. And I'll spend my time in the backyard. We got to step up, folks. If we're not going to do it, don't waste the money on the paper now. Maybe you had to use that money before the end of the year because you can't carry that money over for that paper. But, you know, let's, let's step up. Especially these two cars sitting there, the license plates expired. They're sitting there through the storm, and the plates have been expired since, they expired in October, the last of October, and they're still sitting there. You only have to drive around these neighborhoods and see it. I'll bet you give one of these tow companies an open book to tow these cars, they'd love you forever. And so would the people that have to contend with the people that don't care. You know, it's always seems to be the people that don't care get the support from the city. But like Steve reminded me, I guess I can't complain too much because one of my big complaints a couple of years ago on a piece of property down here that was owned by some people and didn't do anything with it, now it's a nice subdivision. It's got a group of houses in it because I stood up and squawked. I'll bet if I hadn't have squawked, it would still have a rent a fence around it, waiting for something to happen. But I'd appreciate it if you guys would step up and tell us what you're going to do. If you're not going to do it, when I sit down, tell me, "You're not going to do it." So that's, yes or no? Thanks.
Thank you very much, and I believe that was all that signed up. Is there anyone else here to speak? Seeing none, then we'll come back. Mr. Powell, do you have any comments you would like to add?
None tonight, sir. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Council comments?
Just one, Mayor. I think on the two variances, there is a method to go through to appeal that and see about a variance through planning and zoning. And so if they were to follow through with that, that may back up some of the 30-day notice and things like that. But we, as a council, don't issue variances to the regulations that's done through Board of Adjustments and Planning and Zoning. So that would be, in my estimation, the best way for them to go.
Okay. One piece of information I thought about, just thinking of trees that neighbors have. Once it crosses your property line, whatever's above in the air belongs to you, and you can cut it down. Even if it makes the tree one-sided, you can remove anything that's above your property. Just piece of information. So, but it sounds like there's a couple of us that want to go by and take a look at those carports and just kind of see what we're talking about, and have a discussion on that at a little bit later date. And Mr. Markham's comments, always welcome. He comes regularly. And certainly food for thought that you've given us, food for thought. So, don't have any solutions to hand out now, but certainly we'll pursue a couple of these, I think. With that, we'll go on next to the item next on our agenda, which is a public hearing on the budget. on the budget. Every quarter, we reopen our budget for adjustments to reflect additional grants, changes in estimates of funds available, et cetera. Most of these are not our regular, traditional budget items that we cover, but are unusual items that are changes at a recent, more recent date. And so, in accordance with state law, we reopen the budget, make those modifications. A list of those have been published. As I've reviewed them, I didn't see anything that specifically was of a concern. There are some items that were carried forward, there are items that happen subsequent to our budget but doesn't change our basic budget, but these are adjustments to it, since we disclose everything that happens on a budget. So if we happen to get a federal grant during the year, then we adjust our budget to be able to accept that grant and put it into our budget. So these are a number of changes, mostly routine, mostly routine. That is the item before us. With that, then, I will now open up the public hearing portion of, let's see, our reopening of the 2016-2017 budget, considering ordinance sixteen dash fifty-six to reflect that change. With that, is there anyone here who wants to speak to this budget change? Kind of quiet. Must be pretty routine, no one's here. So, with that, then, seeing no public comment, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion. To the council.
Mayor, I would move to approve ordinance sixteen dash fifty-six.
Second. The motion is properly before us. Is there any further discussion or comments from the council before we will? Seeing no further comments, we'll turn to our city recorder, whereby state law, we take a roll call vote on these types of actions.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we go to our resolutions, this will be item nine on our agenda, resolution sixteen dash one ninety-four. This is to approve a federal aid agreement with UDOT for a canal bridge replacement at sixty-four hundred west over the canal there. And we're gradually replacing these, we receive federal funds, we do have to participate and pay for a portion of those funds, fortunately not large amounts, for sixty, just a little less than sixty-seven thousand dollars. That's our portion to replace a bridge, and it's significantly more in cost than that. The total federal participation in the project is nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So you see that we do participate, but it's not a lot. So, and it needs it. And so, every chance we get, and when we have funds available, we replace these bridges. So, with that introduction, then, we'll, we do not have a public hearing on this, we'll just bring it back to, we'll bring it to the council for their action or comment.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution sixteen dash one ninety-four.
Second. Properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we have resolution sixteen dash one ninety-five. This is to extend a current agreement between the city, UDOT, and Stanley Consultants for engineering services. This is on sixty-two hundred south. We had an extension project there to build a road out to U one eleven. There were a few things that we just didn't get done, and you can't do them in the wintertime, so we're going to extend that. So fairly routine, it's already a project that was approved, just didn't get quite completed, so this will approve an extension on that. With that introduction, then, to the council for comment or a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution sixteen dash one ninety-five.
Second. Properly before us. Any further comments? Seeing none. Ms. Adams?
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution sixteen dash one ninety-six. And this one is a little more interesting. This is the city being authorized to acquire by negotiation or condemnation all property interests from Toys R Us located at thirty-five fifty south Constitution Boulevard. We have had a project here to redevelop our city center. As a part of that, we've talked with a number of businesses and their interests and what is happening. However, we've not gotten a lot of response from Toys R Us, and I don't think there's anyone here from them. I don't take it the two young ladies are representing them. Didn't think so. But welcome, by the way. And so, this will give the city another tool to work with, with this company, in order to acquire other property rights in this discussion. That is the issue before us. We'll now turn to the council for any comment or a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments. We have been informed that offers have been made and communications have been extended and even information regarding this meeting and the content of what we're considering, and there's just been no interest shown to discuss the matter with us, which leaves us basically with no choice but to proceed or decide we're not proceeding with any development there.
Also, I'd like to make a comment that the purpose for us doing this is to, when we talk about the public interest, we're talking about a public safety building that would support city services.
Very appropriate. Thank you for your comments. Anything further?
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution sixteen dash one ninety-six.
Second. Motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our recorder for a vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. For our regular city council meeting, that concludes our business, but you will see that we will not leave, we will adjourn this meeting. We have three other very brief meetings to approve budgets for Housing Authority, Redevelopment Agency, and Building Authority. So you'll see those follow immediately after this. With that, then, any final comments from the council? Seeing none? A motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Our regular city council meeting is adjourned.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Redevelopment Agency, note that we have had an opening ceremony, and that all members of the body, with the exception of Karen Lang, are present. We have three sets of meeting, or three sets of minutes from previous meetings, October fourth, November fifteenth, and December thirteenth, twenty sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of those minutes of October fourth, November fifteenth, and December thirteenth.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion to the minutes? Not, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Powell, any communication or report tonight?
No, sir. Thanks.
And we do have an item of business with respect to the budget. Would you please introduce that, Mr. Powell?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just as in the last meeting, we're considering a quarterly budget opening for the Redevelopment Agency. For this quarter's action, there are five items, three of which are associated with a refunding and refinancing project that was done during the last quarter, and two items that have to do with the transfer of funds for the Fairborn Station construction project.
And these are, again, as with the city budget, the things that occur during the regular course of business.
Yes, sir.
We have a public, an opportunity to receive public input regarding the reopening of the 2016-2017 budget, and therefore open the public hearing and invite all those who have come to speak to this issue to come forward in an orderly fashion so that we can hear from you. Not seeing anybody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing and bring the matter before the agency.
Move for approval of resolution seventeen dash zero-one.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Bueller?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have some new business, being the first of the year, it falls on us to elect a new chairperson and a new vice-chairperson for 2017, to officiate in the business of this Seems to me, if I recall, we take nominations, if there are any, and then close nominations and vote. It's not a secret ballot, it's a public vote, like everything else we do. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, do we have any nominations for the Redevelopment Agency Chair?
I'd like to nominate Tom Hune.
Second.
We have a nomination to second for Mr. Hune. Do we have any other nominations? I assume, and we can vote by acclamation, all those in favor of electing Tom Hune to serve as the Chair of the Redevelopment Agency for the year 2017, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The vote has been unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Hune.
Thank you.
We next need to elect a vice-chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Lars Norfeld.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Mr. Norfeld. Are there any other nominations? Hearing them, we'll close nominations and again, proceed with a voice vote for, by acclamation, for Mr. Norfeld to serve as vice-chair. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mr. Norfeld has been elected unanimously and will serve as the vice-chairperson for 2017. We don't have any other business on our agenda tonight, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Call to order of the annual meeting of the Housing Authority, note that we've had an opening ceremony and that all are present except for Councilmember Karen Lang. And we have, the next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from October fourth and December sixth. Any discussion or motion?
I move for approval, those minutes, October fourth, 2016, and December sixth, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And we'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving these minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Any communications or report from our executive officer?
No, sir. Thanks.
All right, we have some new business, to elect a chairperson and vice-chairperson. So I turn to the authority to make a nomination.
This is the Housing Authority, correct?
Housing Authority.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Steve Vincent to serve as the Chair this year.
Second.
Any other nominations? And we'll call for the vote. All in favor of electing Steve Vincent as our chairperson for 2017, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Selected, thank you. Now, for the vice-chairperson.
Now, Mr. Chair, I nominate Don Christensen to serve as the vice-chair.
Second.
Thank you. We have a nomination and a second. Any other nominations? And we'll close the nominations and call for the vote. All in favor of Don Christensen for the vice-chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting was unanimous, and that concludes our business.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Call to order the regular meeting of the Building Authority, Usable Building Authority, note that we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call. We have some minutes to approve, the minutes of October fourth, 2016.
Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes of October fourth, 2016.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any changes to the minutes? All in favor of the minutes as printed, please say aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, we do have a public hea, or, Mr., oh, Mr. Powell, we do have a public hearing tonight, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As with two of the other meetings this evening, we have a budget opening, quarterly budget opening considered this evening. On this one, we have two items, both of which were associated with funds to provide repairs to the pool at the Family Fitness Center.
Okay. We will open the public hearing on these two items on the fiscal year 2016, 2017 annual budget. Anyone here who would like to speak to these two items? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to the count, to the authority.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget.
Okay, that will be resolution seventeen zero-one?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved.
Seventeen dash zero-one. Was it the second or?
Second.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have new, Mr. Chair, just so you know, I'm way out of practice at making motions since I do so few, so I apologize. No problem. We do have new business, that of the election of a chairperson for 2017. Open it up to the authority.
Nominate Karen Lang as Chair of the Building Authority.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I would note that we have lost and squatted our opportunity to nominate Karen Lang to chair all of these agencies in her absence, but I'm not going to make any other nomination.
Thank you. Seeing no other nominations, we will, can we elect her by acclamation? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, she was elected by acclamation. We would now open up nominations for the vice-chair for the Building Authority for 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try this again, see if I get it a little better. I propose that we nominate Steve Bueller as vice-chair of the Building Authority.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. Any other nominations? Seeing none. All who can elect Steve Bueller as vice-chair by acclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. We have one other motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for being here.